...join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I'm going to have American Idol candidate, Mariah Polisi, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up, up here. Yes, okay. I pledge allegiance...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The roll please. Avchi?
Here.
Belkey?
Here.
Marquese?
Here.
MacIver?
Here.
Pateraski?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Seifert?
Here.
Seven present. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature from anyone in the audience. If anyone would like to address the City Council on any subject matter, we have a set time here at the beginning of the meeting for you to address us. So if anyone wants to come up and speak to the Council, please do.
Hi, I'm Julie Stone.
Why don't you pull that down too?
Yeah, I'm short. I'm Julie Stone, 1509 Pine View Court, and as much as I like my newfound friend Bob here, the owner of the Q, I am here to speak against allowing video gaming in Darien. I just think once you open the door to him, and although I want to see his business thrive and my children go to his establishment from time to time, I just think once you open the door, the door is open and it can't be shut again. And video gaming will go into any other business in Darien that has a liquor license. So it will go into family restaurants that serve wine with dinner, and the statistics are that people who don't normally gamble, if it's within 10 miles of their home, they will go in and gamble. So people who normally would go straight home to see their families after work will go into an establishment such as this to play a quick game and spend an hour and a half and half of their paycheck. And I just think it decreases the moral fiber of our community and I really just don't want to see it come in. So as much as I apologize to Bob, and I know he has his point of view and I respect that, I have my point of view also, and I have some video gambling, a bad bet, which comes from Ilcap, Illinois Church Action on Alcohol and Addiction Problems. And I'd just like to send these around to the Council members if I could, please.
Julie, do we have Julie's information?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. Thank you, Julie. Would anyone else in the audience like to address the City Council on any subject matter this evening? And let's move on to the approval of the minutes of January 30th. We have a committee of the whole set of minutes and the minutes of the February 4th, oops, yep, February 4th City Council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes? Alderman Avchi, seconded by Alderman Seifert, except for the typo that I saw in the minutes. Does anyone else have any additions or deletions to the minutes? Then the roll, please. Avchi?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Pateraski?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Marquese?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Both sets of minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Do any of the Aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Belkey?
I received a call yesterday in regards to an event that was happening at the high school, and actually it was over the weekend, on Sunday was the actual call. And the problem was specifically on the 7300 block of Evans, that there was cars parked all up and down the street, causing a hazard. And I even saw some double parking going on in people's lawns, which I thought was very bad. So I called the police and had them survey the area and ticket anybody that was blocking driveways, et cetera. And I believe there was some occurrences that tickets were issued. But I asked the chief to follow up also on the kind of discussion that we had regarding the high school, such as if there's a big event going on that the high school should let the police force know, so that there can be some organization of the parking and to instruct visitors that there's also another parking lot that's on the other side of Claretton Hills Road instead of tying up this res... It just so happened that this residence block was packed and then the other blocks weren't, did hardly have any cars. So it was unfortunate for Evans that they got the brunt of this. And the second piece of communication is for, there was a study done, Dan, if you can help piece in for the viewers, that was done on High Road, and there was some concern that there was a lot of speeding going on. There was a study, traffic study done, and it was warranted that there could be some kind of solutions put in place, such as a speed bump. The resident that was calling about it also asked if there would be a possibility to put a stop sign on the corner of Holly and High, which, if I'm understanding this correctly, it would cost an additional $2,500 to spend to do a study, to figure out if that's feasible or not. So I think where we're at with that is, the city has offered some temporary speed bumps and have, will tell me strategically where they think that those speed bumps, or yes, speed pumps can go, and then we'll take it from there.
And that's pretty much correct. Just to add a little more to that, currently the police department and chief can speak on it. They're finishing up a traffic survey with radar. So again, once we do get a little more information on the radar patrol, we're going to go back and take a look at that. Once we evaluate that portion of it, we're going to go and look at setting up a temporary speed hump. You know, we'll try to get a good location of where the speeding was occurring, if you want to say. So that'll give us the opportunity to put a temporary speed hump in place. We don't want to do it right now just because of the winters and especially the snow, which again is coming in the next couple of days here. So March is the target date for the temporary speed hump. We'll obviously speak to the residents where that temporary speed hump will front prior to us just putting it there. If that speed hump is a viable solution, what'll happen then is we'll forward the petition for request for the speed hump back to the resident and yourself, Alderman, to basically get signatures for or against. Once that's done, we'll bring it back to the Municipal Services Committee. And just to back up a step, back in 2005, I believe it was, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, we did do a traffic study, and that was one of the quadrants that was evaluated, in which case there are stop signs on every east-west street, and there is one on High Road and 69th Street. So with that said, staff had reviewed it and really said there really hasn't been anything that's changed there over the course of the year. So staff felt that it was not appropriate to spend additional $2,500 to conduct a professional opinion from the engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, were you notified by the high school of this event?
No, I was not. I spoke with...
Was it their event?
There was a weekend-long event, a swim meet that went from Friday to Sunday, and a dance as well. However, I spoke with Mr. Waterman today and he's assured me he's going to provide us a schedule through the end of the year.
I know that we have signs on a number of the streets surrounding the high school regarding parking during the daytime for the students, but it doesn't impact...
Exactly, the weekends.
Yes, the weekends and that, so that's...
If you believe in the increase in fee we charge for parking there, if you park, you get a ticket, the ticket cost is double what it was originally.
Are you saying if a student was parking there when a sign was up, that they would get a doubled, is that what you're saying?
They would get a ticket, but we priced the ticket about three years ago, four years ago, at a higher price than it was, say, before then.
As a deterrent to some of these parking...
We've already done that, you're saying?
Yes, we already did that.
Okay, yes.
Chief, I know it must have been maybe two months ago or so, you emailed all the taxing bodies, the school districts, the parks, and asked that they supply you with a list of events, just so things like this can be avoided. I don't know if they responded or if this was just one that missed the list.
It may have been one that missed the list, but we actually started this last year so that the various governmental entities would be supplying us with schedules of events, and this is one that slipped through the cracks.
The same problem at Eisenhower, where they park and don't park, and we extended and changed the amount of space available for parking, and it didn't help. But I do know the people at Eisenhower do talk to you folks when they're going to have an event.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other receiving of communications from the Aldermen? Alderman Avchi?
I guess while we're on the topic of traffic, I've been told by several residents over some time, and a couple more recently, on 71st Street between Richmond and Seminole in particular, about the speeding issues, Chief. But more importantly, people not stopping at the stop signs at the corner of 71st and Richmond and Seminole and 71st, and they've requested, you know, more police presence and be more watchful in that area if possible.
Yes, sir, I'll take a look at it.
Great, thank you.
That goes to, we can't have the police everywhere, but that really goes to the individuals who are driving those cars and what do they think of their own neighborhoods when they're driving through it, and whether they honor the signs and the speeding limit, speed limits. Unfortunate. Any other receiving of communications? And let's move to the Mayor's Report. And we have a couple of stars tonight, but I'm going to take an individual that we had invited to a previous meeting, but she was only able to be here this evening, and it's Mariah Polisi, who happens to be, who happened to be on American Idol. She happens to be a 19-year-old Darien native and Downers Grove graduate, high school graduate. So she had the opportunity of her lifetime to participate in American Idol, and I guess she made Mariah Carey cry in her version of the Beatles song Let It Be. So she made it to Hollywood, but unfortunately she didn't make it any farther than that. But still, that is a tremendous accomplishment, and we just wanted to recognize that accomplishment, Maria. I guess you also shared during your auditions and whatnot that you had a long struggle with anorexia and received a lot of positive feedback regarding that on your Twitter and Facebook pages. But I'd like to have you come up and introduce yourself and say a few words so we can meet our American Idol.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. I'm glad, I'm really, really, I couldn't ask for anything more, like for the support that I've been getting, especially because it was very, very scary to share my story. And it's my personal life, so it was really scary, but everything's been positive. I've been trying not to read, but it's, everything's been positive. So thank you so much.
We'll have to invite you back sometime so you can sing for us.
Yes, I'd love to.
And, oh, that's right, Darien Fest. We have to get you hooked up with Claire Bon Giovanni and maybe do some singing at our Darien Fest. That would be wonderful. So, yes.
You could also sing at Darien Historical Society Dinner.
Ah-ha. Maria, Mariah, we've got a...
John, thanks for volunteering her, I appreciate that.
You better go sit down or else they'll ask you for a lot of... The Historical Society will ask you.
I think we got a few gigs for you already here, it sounds like, so...
This is at this table.
The Historical one's the better gig.
Her agent will contact you.
Do they pay?
Yeah.
That's right, her people will contact your people.
I've got four agents in the audience tonight.
You know what, if Mr. Taft doesn't get his video poker, he might want to hire a singer, who knows?
And for the record, I did see that your audition with Mariah Carey, and she did cry, and it was great, and it made us all proud, you know, in Darien. We were sitting in Darien watching you, so it was great.
Thank you.
That's terrific.
Congratulations.
Put us on the map.
You're going to get a picture.
That's right, we have to get a picture, that's right.
Can I be in the picture too?
No.
We'll shake hands.
Can you sing?
No, you don't want to sing.
No, you don't want to sing, I don't want to. All the things from town, we have to bring our world of things.
All right.
One more.
What do I, she asked me what I have going on now. I'm in the process of finding a band, actually, so if anybody knows anybody that plays the trumpet, that'd be awesome. So yeah, I'm in the process of finding a band and putting some music to all the lyrics that I have crushed up in my notebooks, and then recording songs and hopefully sending them out and getting further than two days in Hollywood.
Thank you, Mariah. Good luck. Good luck to you.
Thanks so much.
The next item under the Mayor's Report is a motion to approve a resolution recognizing Kathy Marquese as our Citizen of the Year, and I'd like to read that resolution. Whereas Kathy and Joe Marquese were married in Westchester, Illinois on August 18th, 1973, and whereas Kathy and Joe have three sons, Jeff married to Carrie, to Christie, sorry about that, Jeff, Christie, and father to Jake and Ella, John married to Linda, and Jamison married to Kelly. And whereas Kathy has truly made Darien a nicer place to live since moving here in November of 1986, and whereas while Kathy Marquese has served in leadership positions in several community organizations, she would rather be seen as a hard worker than as the group leader. And whereas the actions of Kathy Marquese have served to make her a role model, not only for our community, but also for her three sons and their families. And whereas in the late 1980s Kathy Marquese served on Darien's first recycling committee, and whereas Kathy served District, School District 63 as a member of the CAS 2000 Commission to study the future building needs of the district. And whereas for two years Kathy washed clothes for the pads program, and whereas Kathy started and chaired the Market Day Program at Our Lady of Peace for 10 years, bringing thousands of dollars to the school. And whereas Kathy Marquese, along with her husband Joe, initiated the Our Lady of Peace Home and School Association and helped write the first constitution for the organization. And whereas Kathy Marquese chaired and served on various committees and served as lunch mother for 12 years and room mother for three years at Our Lady of Peace. And whereas as a lifetime member of the Darien Historical Society since 2002, Kathy is currently on the Board of Directors and serves as a second Vice President and Membership Chairperson. And whereas Kathy has chaired the Darien Historical Society's Tag Day and co-chairs the Sunday Dinner with Alice Brennan. Are you getting tired of this, Kathy? Have you actually had thought of all the things that you've done? And whereas Kathy Marquese has been a member of the Darien Women's Club since 2002, and whereas Kathy has served two years as Membership Director of the Darien Women's Club and currently serves on the Hospitality Committee. And whereas Kathy has sold tickets to the rides at Darien Fest for Darien Women's Club and the Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Kathy served as a co-chair of Darien Fest Planning Committee and worked tirelessly for five years with Joanne Coleman and committee members to select and schedule food vendors for the event. And whereas while her children were in the Darien Youth Club, Kathy became a DYC Board Member for eight years, during which time she ran the $100 raffle and sold refreshments for Sportscore at the events. And whereas Kathy served on the Hospitality Committee at Hinsdale South High School for four years and was a volunteer scorer for the freshman basketball team. And whereas although Kathy is not a member of the Darien Lions Club, she has been a volunteer for the Annual Candy Day fundraiser for over 20 years, has always finished as one of the top five fundraisers, and in many cases has exceeded funds raised by those of the club members. Ah-ha, very good. And whereas Kathy Marquese has also served as a Darien Lions Club volunteer for the Bureau and corn tents at Darien Fest and assists with the annual food basket drive. And whereas for three years Kathy worked with her husband Joe on the Lions Club District 1 J Night Walk Committee, which is a three-mile walk for site fundraising event. And whereas the Darien Lions Club has awarded Kathy Marquese annual Certificates of Achievement for her numerous years of service. And whereas Kathy worked annually as a fundraiser for the American Cancer Society and for 10 years raised funds for the Alzheimer's Research Fund. And whereas friends can always count on Kathy to take them to the doctor, watch their children or visit them when they are sick. And whereas Kathy Marquese is the first one to help and the last one to leave when help is needed. And whereas Kathy Marquese's selflessness, kindness, gentleness, and helpfulness are hallmarks of who she is and what she is all about. And whereas in Life's Little Instruction book, author H. Jackson Brown states the following, "Live so that when your children think of fairness and integrity, they think of you." Kathy Marquese's son Jeff and Jamison have experienced this through all the works that their mother has so humbly given to our city. Whereas Kathy Marquese has been and continues to be a role model to all the citizens of Darien, now therefore be it resolved in the City Council of the City of Darien that Kathy Marquese be here designated the 2013 Citizen of the Year for the City of Darien in recognition of her many years of dedicated service to the City of Darien and its residents. We have a motioner and a seconder. Any comments? We have a motioner and a seconder. I'm sorry, okay, I thought we did. Alderman Shower, seconded by, well, should I let you?
No.
Alderman Pateraski?
That's more like it.
The roll, please. Shower?
Aye.
Pateraski?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marquese?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Avchi?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye.
Clerk Wagona?
Aye.
Treasurer Corin?
Aye.
Administrator Vanna?
Yes.
Twelve ayes. No nays. You are confirmed here. Kathy, come on up. And here is, I'm going to give this to you right now. Okay, yes, you know about that. Oh, yes, we do definitely want you to say a few words. Why don't you go to the microphone?
Okay.
Wow, that was lengthy.
I think you, you're the tops for the...
Kathy, yeah, when you had that tear in your eye, I'm like, please don't do it, don't do it, because...
Because am I going to make you cry too? That quote really got to me, I'll tell you.
It really did too, and I'm watching you and I'm like, oh, please don't. But, I don't know, I just, you know, when I think of all the citizens in Darien in this community, you know, to be singled out for this award is just, you know, so honored. I am really honored. And when I came in here tonight and I saw all the pictures in the hallway of all the previous recipients, and some of them are even here tonight, you know, to be one of them and following their footsteps, it's, I'm very humbled, I really am. And I just want to thank the committee, you know, Kathy Lyons and her committee, Fran, who Fran just recently had surgery, and I, you know, my prayers go out to her and I hope she's on the road to recovery. And Joan, Bonnie, and Gloria, I don't know if they're in here, if they're out in the hallway already, but I want to thank the Mayor Weaver and the Council for accepting and my nomination or my award. Also, I'd like to, last but not least, my family and friends that have come out on this cold night to support me in this honor. So I just want to thank everyone.
Very good. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Also, people, two people, my aunt who is up there in years, but we won't say how much, but she came out on this cold night, and my grandson Jake, who probably should be in bed, you know, soon. So I just want to thank them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. We'll break for the cake and coffee reception in the lobby after our City Council meeting, but Kathy Lyons, did you want to start the cake and coffee while our meeting's going on? I don't know. Well, okay, all righty. I didn't want to slow down the party there. Let's move to the City Clerk's report.
No report this evening.
Let's go to the City Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. We have a report that will be condensed somewhat. We originally wanted to share the results of the citizens' survey we've done. We had a lot of responses recognizing it's the Citizen of the Year Award. We're just going to, again, shorten it up and let the Council and the public see the new presentation board. So Scott said it's about three minutes of time.
Okay.
Assuming everything works fine.
Assuming everything works fine. And thank you, this will be just a short overview. We wanted the City Council to see the preliminary results of the survey that we've started since January 1st, as we're going into our budget discussions for the year. So those were sent to the City Council as of Friday, so you could see just the stats on all the quantitative and as well as the comments that people brought forward. Now, the first part of the survey was an overall satisfaction, where residents were asked yes, no on a variety of topics. Are you satisfied with the quality of life in the City of Darien? Are you satisfied with the budget process? And we received extremely high marks for all of these. Over 80% for all but one. The fifth one, are the city services of good value for the taxes and fees that you pay, was nearly 80% satisfaction rate as well, so extremely, extremely good. The next section of the site was our individual services. So as an example, street repair, residents were able to give that a grade, an A, B, C, D, or F. And as you can see, and for the specific item, 42% of residents gave our street repair an A, and 39% a B. So we were extremely high marks in all of these areas. Stormwater management was similar, and snow removal was also very high. Snow removal is actually our highest rated service. So as we're going into the budget process, we know that a lot of these services that we do provide are things that we don't need to reinvent the wheel on. A lot of residents are very satisfied with where we're at. There are, obviously, you always want 100% As, so that's something to strive for, but we're pretty pleased with the preliminary results. The final item was the community safety and police presence. That was the final area where you could assign numbers to where residents think that we're doing. Do you feel safe in your neighborhood during the day? And we were well over 90% on that. And we were over 80% in residents feeling that they felt safe in the neighborhoods at night. The lowest rated on this one was, do you feel police patrol in the City of Darien is sufficient? But it was still over 75% satisfaction rate, which is extremely good for this type of a survey. Now, our next steps, the survey is still ongoing, but it shows that we're doing very well at this point. This is going to keep going and we're going to have a larger survey that's going to come out this summer. So we did have people that said that they would be willing to take a larger survey for us, left us their contact information, and we'll be moving forward there. We also regularly survey for individual projects, so when Dan has a ditch project go down a certain street, he surveys them for very specific items on that project. Any questions?
Scott, how many people did you say responded?
We were at 437.
Individuals? So that's, they could be from, there could be multiple people from the same household?
That is correct.
Okay.
So we did, we ended up receiving 64 responses from the Neighbors Magazine, people mailing that back. The rest were a combination of people clicking on the link from Direct Connect and on our Facebook page.
Okay, so, and how many Neighbors magazines do we mail out?
Out of approximately 10,000.
10,000, we got 64 back?
Yeah, we also did have in the Neighbors Magazine, go online and take it too. I think a lot of people just find it easier that way. We went with Neighbors Magazine primarily for those that aren't using the Internet at this point. We do still have some residents that aren't tech savvy, so we receive a number of responses that way. But I think at this point, most people want to contact with us online.
And Scott, that was through Direct Connect. We had sent out the Direct Connect asking residents to take the survey, so that was certainly a very simple way to do that also.
Are you still receiving responses?
Yes, they're starting to come in a little slower, but we are still receiving responses at a pretty good rate. We're pretty much done with the Neighbors Magazine responses.
Okay.
Those are just, they're just barely trickling in now.
I don't recall, are they still in every Direct Connect? Do we remind people?
Yes.
Yes, we still have.
Okay. Could anyone walk in and take this, drop a survey in like a box here, a walk-in?
Do we have that availability?
We do have them. We could certainly put them out and solicit those as they're coming in also.
People, maybe they drop off their utility bill or something like that?
Yeah, we don't generate a ton of foot traffic, but it's certainly a good idea to have those up there.
And Scott, maybe you could have just explained to the Council what the residents at home are looking at on the TV screen now, because part of this whole cable project was to improve, you know, what the residents could see and follow along.
Sure, residents right now also have the ability, you can see the PowerPoint presentation or anything else. That's essentially our fourth camera, so the video volunteers can put that on the screen back for residents to see this, as well as hear the audio. It also helps so residents, or residents in the audience can see items on the screens to really follow along for presentations. And it's good for presentations, but it's going to be an extremely valuable tool for the budget process, so people can follow along the budget and see the same sheets that the Council's seen.
Scott, one last thing. Is there a survey question that kind of identifies the general geographic territory a resident lives in?
And they were also allowed to, we asked them to sign up for Direct Connect if they weren't while doing the survey also. Some did, some didn't.
How many, how many Direct Connect customers do we have now? Aren't we over a thousand?
We're over a thousand, we're close to eleven hundred, I believe.
And this would be a good opportunity to recommend to any residents that are watching or in the audience, to sign up for our Direct Connect. It's such a valuable tool for the city to get information directly to you. We send out a Direct Connect notice every Friday with the latest information, and it's not just about City of Darien business. Our local organizations are able to get out their information on that, on the Direct Connect too. So if you haven't signed up yet, all you need to do is give us your email address, and it automatically gets sent to you.
And they can do that either by emailing any one of staff, or also on our website. There's a little area where they can sign up for an e-newsletter.
Very good.
One of, one of the routine items we put on our Direct Connect too is a link right to our city council agendas, our committee agendas, so all a resident needs to do is click on, on that particular wording, and they can follow everything that's happening in the city in terms of the committees and the council action items and things like that. So, we're trying to make it, we're trying to get the information out really as simple as possible. And again, with, with the more people joining, I think it's, it's really catching on.
Yes. Thank you. Alderman Avchi?
When you have mass emails like this, sometimes, Scott, you run into problems with residents not getting the email because the firewalls and spam filters would prevent it. I guess maybe another thing we could ask the residents if they've signed up, and if they're not getting the emails, look into their spam filters and see if they can handle that way. If not, maybe contact Scott. Have you heard anything like that, Scott, people not getting after signing up?
Every once in a while, we have periodic problems, and it's a little bit of a difficult one to attack because there's so many different spam filters out there, and they're all set a little bit differently. So, it's something that we, we really attack on a, on a case-by-case basis. Most of our emails, we've, we've corrected most of those problems by changing our own email addresses to having a .gov suffix, which allows, that, that allows you to skip most spam filters. So, in general, we've had fewer problems with it, but it can still happen.
Scott, there was, at one point, there was a problem, if we send out more than one in a week, exactly that would happen. And now, because of the new address, also, we've been able to send out more than one in a particular week if we need to, and they have gone through.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks very much. Let's move to department head information or questions. Do either of the department heads have comments this evening?
No report this evening.
Do any of the Aldermen have questions for the department heads? Let's move on to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 121317, and the amount of $428,183.60 from the listed funds, as well as payroll for the period ended February 7th, the amount of $247,150.94, for a total to be approved of $675,334.54.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Pateroski. Anything for the treasurer? Then the roll, please. Marques?
Aye.
Pateroski?
Aye.
Avchi?
Aye.
Belke?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Schauer?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Seven ayes. The warrant has been approved. The next item on the agenda is standing committee reports, and the Administrative Finance Committee asked that the discussion of video gaming ordinance be put before the whole city council for discussion. I don't know if we have a consensus at this point of Aldermen that are in favor of it or against it. I mean, I'd like to get a feeling, and if you need more information, we, we could put this off to another meeting. I, I'd just like to get a feel for where, where all of you are. Alderman Marques?
Mayor Weaver, one of the things I always consider when we're looking at the economics of our business community is how a change in ordinance might impact the total community. You know, in this instance, we've had this out there in the patch and in the newspapers for about a week or so now, and, you know, I, I was thinking maybe we would've heard from one of these other businesses pursuing the same thing as Mr. Taft is pursuing for Q bar. Right now, it appears as if this is the only business in Darien that would be seeking such a license. I, I'd like to know, before I make a decision, whether or not there are other businesses on that list of seventeen that we have that might be interested in this. To me, if it's something that was gonna benefit more than just one business, I'd like to know that.
Any other comments from the Aldermen? Alderman Belke?
I went over the weekend to visit somebody that had it, and so I went over to Countryside. And I was actually pleasantly surprised at how it ran, and you wouldn't even know it was there, as a matter of fact. It was very quiet. There was just some senior citizens sitting at the machines and not getting up. But, no, but it was, it was run really quietly. There wasn't a lot of people, you know, in the bar area that looked like they were there for that reason. And then, when you cashed out, you went to another area outside the bar that had like an ATM-looking machine, you know, where you can get your money back. But, one of the things, so, so anyway, I was pleasantly surprised about that. And one of the things I'm thinking of, you know, the estimate out there right now is perhaps $11,000 a location, and-
That's, you're saying that's revenue to the city?
That's revenue to the city, and I think that may be a high estimate, but irregardless, what I'm thinking of is not necessarily that dollar per se, but more in the sense that, you know, the Sportsplex is our biggest tourist attraction. We have people coming from out of state, out of country, visiting hockey and other events going on there. And it, what I'm thinking is it could make the difference of them going to Willowbrook or Burr Ridge for their dinner or dining. It, it could make that little bit of a difference. So, not only that, if, if you have it in some establishments in Darien, it might make the patrons linger a little more and spend more money in food and, and drink. So I think all that part's positive. And the other thing is, I sampled whoever I can gather in the last few weeks, and it's been coming out to about one out of every twelve are in, are against. So one out of every twelve are against. That means, you know, there's eleven that are, that are interested in it. And some of the reasons that they say is because of the, making us more competitive and, and the revenue part. So I just wanted to share my observation. Like, like Joe Marques said, I would be interested in how many, because if there's seventeen that are eligible, that doesn't make me feel good that there's seventeen running around. That number's gonna be much smaller. I would like to know what, what number that is, though.
Seventeen of the businesses in Darien that are qualified?
Are eligible.
Yeah.
In order to qualify, you might explain what, what is, what is necessary to qualify?
Right, it's a-
Well, I don't think we need to get into all those details right now.
That one, because the main reason behind it is, is that it has to be a sit-down eating establishment.
That serves beverages? Yeah, and, yeah, I, I understand that. Other, other thoughts? Alderman Seifert?
As a small business owner myself, I think, you know, I can appreciate that in this economy, you need to add value to the product that you're selling. And certainly, you know, different establishments add different value in different ways, you know, whether it's live bands, or whether it's, you know, specialized food, what have you. So I could certainly appreciate that, you know, video gaming of this sort would add a value to a business, especially in this economy. And I think certainly when discretionary income is at a limited availability to most people, adding that value can be very important, and not, you know, take what Bob Taft said at the last meeting, that he'd have to close down if he doesn't get this at face value, but I could certainly appreciate that. And I also know that you can walk into many bars and buy lottery tickets while you're, while you're having a drink. So, and even in the city of Darien. So you have bars in the city of Darien that have a license to sell lottery tickets, which seems to be okay with everybody, but, you know, then when you talk about gambling, you know, now we get the arguments that, you know, it's a very evil thing, and you have, you know, people are gonna get addicted to gambling, and we're spending tens of thousands of dollars that they should be spending somewhere else. So, I'm not sure those two can really, you know, live together. And then also, with the same token, the video gaming machines that we're talking about here, the max bet is $2 per bet, and I believe the max payout is $500 per payout. So I have a hard time believing that somebody is going to sit there and pump their paycheck into this gambling machine with the hope of striking it rich when the max payout is $500. So, I just think that when we're making this decision, we have to, you know, keep all the facts straight and make sure we're looking at this exactly for what it is. You know, we're not looking at to have video gaming machines in, you know, seventeen establishments in town, which I think why the survey of that would be a good idea. A lot of them probably don't even want it. So, and I also agree with Tina that when you have people coming from out of town and you're competing with that business, when you, some of your surrounding communities have the video gaming, not having it, I think, could be detrimental to the city as a whole.
Well, there's a big difference between the lottery tickets. We have absolutely no control. That's state-controlled. There's, we have absolutely no control over that.
I understand that.
So I don't think, I don't think they're two equal things.
From a gambling standpoint, whether I'm buying a hundred dollars worth of lottery tickets or putting a hundred dollars into a video gaming-
Well, I'm, I'm talking about control, you know, and, and the fact that the lottery exists and the state allows that. We, we have no control over that, but Alderman Avchi?
I think the jury is out on this issue. You know, the machines went live only in September, October timeframe in Illinois, and we only have about four months of data. There are arguments on both sides of the issue. You know, we've heard from Mr. Taft and, and others that it's an economic incentive to the businesses, and also it could bring some extra revenue to the city, although granted, it's not a lot of, a lot of money. It's not gonna make, I don't think, make or break the city, or I kind of also question whether it's gonna make or break the business. But there are also arguments on the other side. If you look at, there was a National Gambling Impact Study Commission established in 1997, 1999, and they issued a report in 1999. And one of their recommendations, that's recommendation three dash six, I'll read this very short, it says, "The commission received testimony that convenience gambling, such as electronic devices in neighborhood outlets, provides fewer economic benefits and creates potentially greater social costs by making gambling more available and accessible. Therefore, the commission recommends that states should not authorize any further convenience gambling operations and should cease and roll back existing operations." More recently, there's been a lot of discussions in Illinois, and one professor at the University of Illinois, John Kint, K-I-N-D-T, is, is said to be an expert in this area, and has been studying this for two decades. He went to a village board meeting, kinda like our meeting we're having right now, in the city of Savoy, S-A-V-O-Y, on May 9th, 2012, where they were discussing whether they should allow this type of gambling. And in his testimony, and you can Google this, and it's on the internet, in the minutes of that meeting for the city of Savoy, he called this video gaming crack cocaine. He further explained that, you know, how losing money causes crime, and crimes go up ten percent per year with video gambling machines, and he firmly believes that the situation is getting worse. So given those two arguments, and the fact that this is new, I would very much suggest that instead of taking actions at, at this time, we monitor the situation, learn from the experience of our neighboring towns. There aren't too many towns. If you look at how many of them have really went ahead and reversed their position, there aren't too many of them. There are like three out of ten or eleven. So we kind of monitor them and visit this issue again come in the, like, spring, on late summer, fall timeframe this year. Because, you know, as was said earlier, Ms. Stone mentioned, once you give this permission, it's harder to take it back. I think we ought to do our homework, due diligence, and decide that this is something really we wanna do, and then do it at that time. So that would be my suggestion.
Well, you, you, you've read the materials that we've received. You can rescind your, your-
You can, but after the businesses have spent a lot of money bringing the machines in and spent money, it's, it wouldn't be fair to them.
I, I appreciate that, but I just wanted, I was, I just wanted to be sure you, you saw that information. Alderman McIver?
Oh, I didn't put my hand up.
I know. I know you didn't.
You know, my, I tend to be kinda conservative when it comes to these kinds of decisions because I too am looking at kind of the impact on the community.
Sylvia, could you hear mics a little behind, sorry?
Yeah, sorry. You know, I would look at it as, how is it gonna impact the community, not just the one, or five, or all seventeen businesses? I think that it was just passed in October. There's very little data, you know, to look at, and I don't feel comfortable necessarily being one of the first to rush into it. Obviously, some of our, you know, what I consider communities that I would like to model, the Hinsdales, the Downers Groves of the, you know, of the, of DuPage County, haven't rushed into it, and they certainly have more-
Establishments.
Types of establishments that, you know, they, that would benefit from it. So, you know, I guess I would take, I'm not ready to jump into, you know, changing the ordinance at this time. I'd like to, you know, kinda monitor it for six months or so, and then kinda revisit it, but that's just the way I see it.
Actually, I think the, the ordinance, the state legislature passed the law in January, but it took until October for, for businesses to get-
To get going, right.
Go through the process of getting licensed and everything.
Right, so the first ones went live in October.
In October, yes.
So there's just not that much information yet to look at, and I'm just, I think, you know, again, I, I can truly understand a business's perspective, and, and certainly can, and can understand how it's important. I mean, if you do the math, assuming that everyone gets, if you do, if all seventeen establishments decided to do it, and there, there are some rules where the, it has to be in a twenty-one-only area where people, you know, it's not, it's not gonna be like where kids are dining or whatever. They do have to be kinda separated, but, you know, if all seventeen did it and all generated the kind of revenue that they talk about, people would have to spend $4 million, you know, and that's a lot of money to make that kind of revenue, and that's, and they don't get all of that $230,000. That's just in total. But if you think about, you know, how people should be spending, you know, $4 million in Darien, I guess I'm not comfortable with that being where the money is, is spent, you know. So, I, I would take a, I, I'm not comfortable with jumping into it, you know, at this point in time. I'd like to sit back and see, you know, what, what, how things are looking. I mean, from the police department's perspective, I'd like to see what, you know, how communities are impacted when, you know, people are upset because they lost, or whatever the case may be. I don't, I don't know. I don't gamble, so I don't know enough about, you know, kinda the dynamics of, of that, but I can certainly see that people play games, and, you know, you go to Buffalo Wild Wings and people are doing all that, you know, and it's entertainment, and people consider that a form of entertainment and are happy to spend money being entertained that way. And I certainly don't wanna necessarily take that option away from people, but again, it's a kind of a community impact, and I'd like to hold off making that decision, at least till there's more data from other communities that have implemented it.
Alderman Pateroski, did you wanna share your view at this point?
Yes. I think the wait and see is the right attitude, not the rush into it, because if we did a survey, which was just completed and we're looking at Burr Ridge, Downers Grove, Hinsdale, La Grange, La Grange Park, Lyle, Lombard, Oak Brook Terrace, the unincorporated DuPage County, Willowbrook, Woodridge, all are no.
Well, Oak Brook Terrace is a yes, but, but you're, but you're correct on the rest of them.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Old man.
Alderman Schauer?
I like the idea that we should wait for about six months. I think the police should monitor the situation with Westmont and see how that situation turns out, if they're having any problems once gambling goes online.
of them.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Old glasses, old man.
Alderman Shaw?
Um, I like the idea that we should wait for about six months. I think the police should monitor the situation with Westmont and see how that situation turns out, if they're having any problems once gambling goes online. I also'd like to know what Joe said about the other, you know, 17 businesses and see what they think about it. The fact of the matter is, is that if Westmont and Willowbrook, if they end up, you know, opting in, you know, we have to take a serious look at it. But at the same time, there's too many questions out on the table.
Alderman Marquez?
Just to mention, this is the report for September. 61 terminals in September, amount played, $1 million. One-page report. The January report was 29 pages, 3,334 terminals and $125 million played. So that's four months' worth of reports. And the reason I mention that, and if you look at this line by, I went through these pay, reports line by line, a little to communities that I thought were similar to Darien where there were multiple locations. And it's inconclusive because there are communities that have four or five locations where the revenues just aren't there. And there are communities like Darien that have four or five locations and the revenues are there. So you really can't say that if you have four or five locations, it's going to produce X amount of dollars because this data will show that to be wrong. What, what a few more months may do for us, it may give us an opportunity to see how many more of these come online and to see the type of revenues that is generated, to see some of the problems associated with that. This may be something that becomes so saturated that it really does have little impact on a business. I mean, if they're in Westmont, if they eventually go into Willowbrook, if they eventually go into Burr Ridge, you know, it's, it's going to be like going into a convenience store and buying a Lotto ticket. They're going to be on every corner. So waiting is fine, I understand that. I'm, I'm just saying that in the form, you know, only four months of data though, that is, that is a significant increase from $1 million to $125 million in terms of the amount played. And, and while it's inconclusive in terms of guaranteeing revenue to the owner as well as to the city, I think it bears some thought as to whether or not it's something that we should consider earlier than six months.
Treasure Corin, you want to put, make a comment too?
I'll put my two cents in as usual. I, I, I'm not going to offer my opinion as far as whether it's appropriate or not, but I guess I'd like to commend the council in their thinking on this. I don't think any of this was brought up with the thought that it's going to be a revenue source to the city. And I believe everything I've heard tonight is pretty much saying we want to evaluate it in terms of how it affects the businesses in our community as opposed to the revenue effects to the city. We're starting our budget meetings tomorrow and I mean, we have none of this budgeted and I don't think any of us are looking at that. I think as we preliminarily have looked at the budget, I'm very encouraged and happy with the way we've been operating. And I, we're not looking at this as a revenue source. There's a lot of other communities maybe looking at it. So I think that's important to get through the, to the residents. And I think that's sort of what I'm hearing from the aldermen as I'm sitting here. I planned on just sitting quietly, but I'm, I'm happy to hear what I'm hearing people say because I think their, their intentions are pure and doing things for the right reason.
Well, I think, I think the gist of what I've heard this, the, this evening is that we'll, we'll wait and see. I think it would be important to, to, you know, poll the other businesses in town to find out if any of them are indeed thinking about going this route. So we know what we're dealing with and the chief, chief, I'm sure you'll be able to supply us. Did the chief contribute to the committee on any statistics that they've discovered?
He wasn't present at the meeting.
Okay, no, we didn't, we didn't get that far. Okay, because that would be an important, well, not at this time, but you know, I'm sure he'll, we're, we're putting him on the spot right now. He needs to get, get some information, but I think that would be important information. Can we leave it at that or is it really important?
No, addition, just an addition to, to Mr. Taft. I understand his, his position wanting to increase revenue, but I think the city is already helping him by bringing Chuck's Southern Comfort, you know, with that kind of business right next to his, I think he should benefit from it. And I was just going to suggest in the way of his helping him and also helping the city, that one of the things we've been working really hard is to have a bus stop for the express bus going on I-55. And one of the areas that could be very well suited for him, for Darien and for other businesses to have the bus stop there. And imagine all the folks who come off the bus and coming from Chicago, stopping by his bar to have a, to have a drink or to go back home. Or in the morning, having, stopping at Sylvia's Bakery to get a, you know, cup of coffee and stuff like that. So maybe he can talk to his landlord to help him like that.
Well, that would be, I, I was just looking at Scott. Have we approached, have we approached, I think, that, what group is that owns that property?
We spoke to the landlord of that property probably around a year ago or so.
To use their lot for parking?
And Pace wanted that lot as a park and ride to go into the city.
Yeah.
And they were unwilling to participate.
So maybe Mr. Taft can talk to his landlord.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's the answer. Maybe we can approach him again, but you know, that's as far as we can go. It's, we're, we're try, for the viewing audience, we are trying to find, we have, we have approached Pace about putting a location for a Pace bus, a commuter bus stop in Darien for the benefit of residents who are working downtown to make their trips easier. And that's what Alderman Abchi was talking about and what I was talking about with Mr. Corin, yes?
Madam Mayor, I think all of us up here want Mr. Taft's business to be successful and we, you know, we respect what you've given to the community that, for the 10 or 12 years that you've been there. Maybe something that would help him out is to know that maybe we've scheduled a six-month review or a four-month review where we would look at the continued data from the state. We do some search in terms of other businesses within the community that might be entrusted. We possibly get feedback from the chief on how this is affecting other municipalities so that we can actually tell him that we're going to actually discuss this again, maybe four months down the line, six months down the line, you know, and not just wait until somebody brings it up again. If, when you make something more definitive like that, I think maybe it makes him feel a little bit better to know that it's not something that's going to just go away, that we're going to actually look at it and study more additional data.
We will. We will definitely do that, yes.
One of the things I've learned is the backlog takes some time. So if Westmont has just gone online, it could take six months.
Two years.
For, or, yeah, for those places to, for that to even happen. So any research we do will be from communities that would be up and running by then, obviously.
Well, but there's, you know, communication that's live that could take place between like the police chief of the communities that have it and say, hey, since, yeah, that kind of stuff is.
Yes, we, we need to keep moving in that direction, getting information.
I just was using Westmont as an example because I think Ted mentioned that, but that, we wouldn't be able to monitor that, but certainly other communities we would.
Yeah, because I don't see this as a revenue generator. So I mean, I, I wouldn't look at this as, as the reason to, to say yes or no to this is because of the revenue it would generate for the city. I see it again as what's the impact on the businesses and community? And maybe there's something we could add to direct connect, like, like add it as a question, like if you have any comments, this is what, you know, has been out there, this information, you know, this is something that Darien is considering, you know, contact your alderman, you know, if you have any, you know, whether you support it.
We will do that, we will do that.
Yeah, we put it on the last direct connect, but not directly saying contact your alderman.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
But we put the information and whatever the council asks that, we put that out also.
Contact their alderman anyway, Sylvia.
Well, you know, I only got one communication on it.
All right, let's move on. Let's, let's move on to questions. The next item on the agenda is questions and comments that are, that are related to the agenda. Do any of?
Standing committee reports?
Oh, that's right. That was part of the standing committee reports, but you want to add something?
Well, dates, yeah.
Yes.
The next, the next scheduled police committee meeting is Thursday, March 7th, I believe, 2013, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. However, that date might be moved based on, we wanted to schedule the police committee meeting to follow the community meeting regarding the, 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 the dare transition. So that was supposed to take place at the end of February, but that date hasn't been scheduled. So if, if that meeting hasn't taken place yet, then we might move the, but tentatively scheduled for March 7th.
All right. Alderman Pateroski?
Admin Finance is going to have a committee of the whole meeting tomorrow at 6:30 here. What that really means is that it's budget time and we're going to start the budget cycle next, tomorrow, and then the substance going to week on a Tuesday. We've gone as many as five times, but we'll hopefully can get a budget in less time this time.
Thank you. Alderman Marquez?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the municipal services committee is meeting next Monday night, February 25th at 6:30 in the council chambers.
Thank you. Now, let's move on to questions and comments, agenda-related. Any of the aldermen have questions on any of the items that are under the consent agenda? Let's open it up to the audience. Is anyone here to speak to any of the items on the consent agenda this evening? Okay, so let me go through the consent agenda, the items on there for the viewing public. The first item is a motion to approve an ordinance to sell personal property owned by the city, which includes vehicle, cameras, printers, exercise bike, Melissa, Melissa?
Miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous. Evidence items. Item B is a motion to approve the expenditure of budgeted funds for the purchase of ammunition from Keesler Police Supply out of Jefferson, Indiana. And I, I forgot the amount, chief. It was 20, was it?
$12,489.
Yes, $12,489. Items C through I are the annual bids that Director Dan Gombach gets from various vendors who will be possibly doing business within the city of Darien. He gets unit price bids from them and that we might use them in some public works project throughout the year. The first, the item C is for Central Blacktop for bituminous products. Item D is for EF Heil for getting rid of various public works waste. Item E is a proposal from Trucking, from DAS Enterprises for trucking services. Item F is a resolution to approve, a proposal from CNM Pipe Supply for pipes for various projects. Item G is a proposal from Elmhurst Chicago Stone. Item H is a proposal from Elmhurst Chicago Stone for, also for, for Stone for public works projects. Item A is for a, a unit price bid from DuPage Topsoil for, for various projects within the city. And all of those unit prices are being honored by those companies from May 1st, 2013, through April 30th, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? Alderman, Alderman Marquez, seconded by Alderman Belkey, all in favor?
Hi.
I have a question.
Oh, no, on a consent agenda, there are, no, no item, no?
Excuse me.
Okay, did you want to remove one of the items?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay. We have a motion, Alderman Marquez, seconded by Alderman Belkey. The role, please.
Marquez?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Abchi?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Pateroski?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All items have been approved. Let's move to new business. And there being no new business, let's just move right to the last item on the agenda. Questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Alderman Pateroski?
I didn't get my nickel, I'll get my nickel. The items that we went through and approved the consent agenda were bid, right? You didn't just pick these people up along the way. Each one that ended up doing it was a sign, was the winner of a bid and therefore is a good pricing for us.
Did we do a coin toss?
I think we just flipped a coin, did we?
I can remember.
No.
You know, Alderman Pateroski, you know what? You, you bring up an important point. I should have pointed that out when I was reading all of these. All of these items that were on the agenda were competitively bid. Yeah, we, that's the way we do it.
It's very important. We do a lot of competitive bidding.
Yeah, yeah, good point, very good point. Alderman Marquez?
Just, just to mention, municipals, Dan's been doing this now for about four or five years. And we put all these bids out in January and all these businesses honor their unit pricing. And what this guarantees us is that we usually save money on our ditch projects and a lot of our in-city projects. Five, six years ago before we did this, we were at the mercy of some of our, of the suppliers at various times during the year when we needed the supplies. Bidding them out in January gets us better pricing.
I think in just an example of that is prior, years prior to, we used to buy pipe. Well, we would buy quantity of pipe. We always buy a certain quantity of pipe regardless if it's projects or if they're just maintenance repair items. Whereas years before, there was no real quote. It was, okay, let's go get from a local supplier 30, 40 feet of pipe. Obviously, 40 feet of pipe over the course of a year adds up to about 1,000 feet of pipe. So, but the answer to your question is yes, everything is competitively quoted.
Thank you.
Pending budget approval, correct?
In some cases, it's material that we would use regardless of projects in the budget.
Buy most of that stuff anyhow.
Yes.
All right, any other questions and comments or announcements from the council? Alderman Belkey?
I wanted to bring up something that I forgot to bring up last time, but it's regarding the Darien signs, the old ones. So I know way back when I was talking with the Darien Women's Club and they wanted to, they thought maybe we should auction some of the old ones off. And then I think it was Dan or somebody forwarded me a message where it looks like we did donate one to the Historical Society. And are we debating auctioning any others that we have?
One was going to be given to the Historical Society. The other one was also going to be given to the Darien Women's Club. And the remainder of them, it's, you know, again, they're very fragile, there's certain parts and pieces that you could take for maybe one or two of them to build a, something decent. But again, they are very fragile. So with the remainder, you know, we'll see what the request come in as and evaluate them one at a time.
But I think in all reality, first come, first served because otherwise they're going to be in a dumpster if they're rotting out. So if there's a community group that wants those, like the Historical Society or anybody, just call us.
Yeah, they were in pretty bad shape, their net worth.
Definitely wants one.
Oh, yes. Yeah, that, Alice has already, did you deliver it to her already?
I believe Dan Silvato was going to meet with her, she was going to take a look at the inventory, yes.
Okay. All right, if there, is there anyone in the audience that wanted to address the city council on any items at all? Bob, did you? Yeah.
Hi, I'm Bob Taft from Q Billiards at 8109 South Cass Avenue in Darien. I just want to thank everyone, first of all, for taking a look at the, the video gaming issue. I just wanted to touch base and I'm sorry, I dropped my pen on the way in. So I have some, some real quick notes. I just wanted, excuse me, address some of the things that, that people had said. First of all, there is a history on this, okay? I understand it's new in Illinois, but there's 11 other states that have done the exact same thing. They went from zero to a very similar model, very minor wagers, very limited payouts. So there is a history of the last four years and most of the numbers and things that we've looked at come from that history. And it's all available online. You can look at the different states that have opted in and allowed this for the last three or four years. So there is a built-up history. You know, and not all the establishments in Darien want this. You got to understand a couple of things. First of all, as, as, as you had said, you know, it's a very clean type thing. It's not like CD or anything like that. They're very high-class, nice machines. They don't generally, first of all, they must be mandated by the state to be away from children. They can't be near it. So many of the liquor licenses in Darien wouldn't, you know, qualify for it. They don't have a section such as we do. We are predominantly 21 and over and we have the right to have some kids in. I'm actually doing a sponsorship for my son's baseball team tomorrow, so we're going to have them in there. But for the most part, I mean, we're a 21 and over establishment. You're not going to see it in the Buena Beef's and things like that because it's not something that fits with their decor. It's something that has to fit in with the, the restaurant, the type of business they're attracting. I'm obviously attracting an older clientele. We don't cater to children, you know, anyone under 21 for that matter. I know that most of the other city or the other establishments in Darien are not that interested. To be frank, the operators that I know that are, the actual vendors of the machines have went to the other establishments and don't have a lot of interest or else they would be here as well. So it is, you know, a couple of, you know, locations that may be interested in it, myself being one of them. You know, one other thing I wanted to throw in is we talk about studies. I know in the, the Westmont Chief of Police, when it originally came up, he was vehemently against it. He'd come out on record, said he was against it. He, he went ahead and did his own studies before they opted in because he found, and he ended up changing his vote to being for it because he saw that there was no noticeable crime increases or any sort of problems or anything like that. So that was what, what actually swayed his mind. You know, when we have these, these, these different businesses, I feel if something's in Illinois allowed such as Lotto, to be frank, you can spend a lot more money on Lotto than you, than you really could on these. And you see it all the time. You go into the convenience stores, people scratching off tickets and buying tickets.